Welcome to the February 12, 2025, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copely.
Present.
Commissioner Gagné.
Present through Zoom.
Great. Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner Parnas is excused tonight. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Jeff Churchill, Ian Lefkort, Glenn Coyle, Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, Lauren Alpert, Odra Cardenas, and Chris Wyatt. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's approved. And then I also look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 22, 2024.
So moved.
2025. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those are approved. Now it's time for us to hear public comment and items from the audience. I'll turn it to Ian.
We have one member. The first is David M. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I wish to speak about Agenda Item 6, the Proposed Community Design Standards. Having an interest in Redmond's future development, I appreciate the comprehensive approach being taken to restructure and modernize your design guidelines. The emphasis on equity, inclusion, and sustainability as guiding principles for these standards is encouraging. The integration of universal design requirements and visibility standards shows real forethought in making Redmond accessible to everyone. The addition of features like adult changing rooms, sensory rooms, and weather-protected loading zones demonstrates a genuine commitment to inclusive community design. The reorganization of design standards into a topic-based structure rather than location-based should make the code more user-friendly and consistent across the city. However, I urge the Commission to ensure that this reorganization does not inadvertently diminish the unique character of your different neighborhoods and centers. The emphasis on sustainability and resilience in the new standards is commendable. The inclusion of vegetated walls and roofs, biosolar installations, and passive development forms shows that Redmond is serious about climate action. And I appreciate the support for mass timber construction, which could help reduce your building sector's carbon footprint while creating distinctive architecture. The focus on human-scale design, street-level activation, and public spaces is crucial for creating a vibrant, walkable city. As Redmond grows denser, especially around its transit stations, these elements will be essential for maintaining livability and community connection. I encourage the Commission to carefully consider how these standards will work with recent state legislation, particularly House Bill 1293. There's a crucial need for clear, objective standards that satisfy HB 1293 while still ensuring enough flexibility to achieve design excellence. As you review these standards, I hope you'll consider adding more specific guidance around cultural expression in architecture and public spaces. The brief mention of cultural districts contributing features could be expanded to better reflect and celebrate Redmond's diverse community. Finally, I appreciate that these standards will support creative solutions through administrative design flexibility. This approach should help encourage innovative design while maintaining high standards for Redmond's built environment. Thank you for your consideration of these comments as you work to shape Redmond's future development.
Thank you. Great. Okay, so next we will conclude our work on Parts 1 and 2 of the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. I'd like to bring up Becky Frye. Is that right?
Yes, I'm online tonight. Thank you.
Great.
So this evening, we have drafted the Planning Commission report per our previous discussions. We are hoping for a motion to approve the actual draft amendments and a motion to approve the Planning Commission report. I do want to really quickly run through a few of things that are different in this packet from previous. Again, we based it off of Planning Commission direction in previous conversations. A lot of changes were made in 2104. We've talked to you about that in particular, the Ls that didn't have notes explaining what that L meant. And so just going through and catching one last pass through the tables for allowed uses and making sure that the consolidation was correct and that everything really was labeled clearly so we understood what the actual limitation meant. And so much thanks to our Planning Manager Jeff Churchill for his eagle eye of going through a lot of these, you know, hundreds of cells. I do want to call out a couple of them in particular, and we did email them this list to you as well for your record. But as we did some of the consolidation, there were some changes, but also there's Dr. Morton had provided some feedback on some Ls that should be L2 to recognize the Cara. We did actually fold those in in the hotels. They were allowed in the current general commercial zone, but not in the corridor mixed-use zone. And we do have some hotels that are in that zone today. So we just switched that back so that it isn't allowed use in corridor mixed-use. I do again want to point out that under state law, zones that have hotels as an allowed use must also permit that transitional housing, that step housing, including emergency shelters. So that is a change that we did want to call out and let you know that that was happening. A couple of other things, just as just making sure, again, it was allowed on the current, but with the consolidation, maybe we just didn't quite get it right. So animal kennels, postal services, towing operators, heliports, a rapid charging station, and animal production. Again, we're just taking a look and making sure that we're not missing things that are allowed today, just with the consolidation. We're not intending to do a lot of overhauls on what is allowed or what the conditions are. And so that is something that we'll continue into the future. But we did want to make sure that we weren't inadvertently making a change that we weren't intending. So a couple of those things happened in 2104. A couple of other minor little things that happened in the 2104 is a tiny edit in 2104 2020, active-use retail. And that's so that we can be consistent with our zones and 2158 ground-floor regulations. And so making sure that we're not overlapping and we're just making sure that it's consistent, like I said. And then just again, throughout 2104, cross-referencing to the new numbering system for 2158 because they're all going to go into effect the same day. So we want to make sure that the new numbering system was reflected. So a lot of edits for cross-references in 2104. A couple of other things that happened again in 2155, the development incentives. After our last meeting, I took all of our notes and we folded that in. A couple of tiny things as we started to incorporate all the comments, I did have to massage the numbers a little bit to make sure that as we stacked them together, the progression really made sense. So a couple of adjustments in there, but I went with the intent of the comment and the direction for Planning Commission. We also did remove the language that we had put in there for the town center incentives. We had received a comment from the community that there was an easier way to keep those around to allow the town center to continue their current project that's in the system right now. And so they were removed from 2155, but a statement was added to 2110. So again, so that's a project that's currently in the process, but may not get all of its approvals done in time. And so just to make sure that that doesn't run into some flaws in that process. But that is a streamlined approach. It's a lot less text and it simplifies 2155 and it removes something that would have an end date so that we don't have to remove it later. So that's an easier approach to go forward. A couple of tiny changes in 2113. We updated a section in the table and a map, again, just to kind of remove some conflicts and do some updating. One of the things that we did in the map is we had identified some pedestrian-oriented block faces and some active-use retail spaces in the Marymore Manufacturing Zone, and it didn't really fit that zone and it wasn't in the current map that way. So we stripped those back out and just to reflect that, that's not, that zone doesn't have that much of that use. So it's not appropriate for there. And in 2114, again, it's just really a minor edit where the allowed uses and basic development standards for manufacturing park, business park, and industrial zones, deleting them in their entirety. The keeping the tables just ended up duplicating information that was in 2104. So again, just did some additional deletions in 2114. Tiny, tiny edit for green building. Commissioner Parnas had had an edit in the issues matrix in 21. Issues, item 11.8, that we had said we'd incorporate into Appendix 10, and so that was folded in. And then we just added some cross-references back and forth between 2167 and Appendix 10. So no content changes really there. So almost all of this, we had had a pretty robust discussion about, and we feel like the package represents the direction that we received from Planning Commission, but we're open to a discussion and we look forward to a motion and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, so let's open it up if anyone has any questions or discussion on the changes that were outlined by Becky. All right, so if not, in that case, I'm looking for a motion first to approve the amendments in the recommendation that were just discussed now.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then as a second vote, I look for a motion to approve the Planning Commission Recommendation Report for City Council on Parts 1 and 2 of the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050.
Approved.
Say moved.
Moved, sorry, okay.
Second.
Any discussion on that? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? All right, thank you. So that is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll get this forwarded to council.
Thank you for your work. All right, next up, Item 6, Study Session on Design Standards in Part 3 of the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. So for that, we're going to have Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, Lauren Alpert, and Odra Cardenas.
Right. So. So we're excited to get this moving forward and have some really robust discussion over the next six, I believe, Planning Commission meetings as we take a look at the draft design standards. We are still working on the red lines and we will get them out as soon as we can. It is taking us a little bit longer than we hoped, so we hoped to get it out last week with the packet, but it will take us a little bit more time. We have for you tonight, again, some additional background and then just bringing everybody up to speed and making sure that everybody understands how we got here, how long it's taken. We're just going to do a really high-level overview of the updates. It's been a couple of months since we introduced what is in this package. And then we want to have a conversation about how we think that the Planning Commission could approach the review of the content and things that we would really appreciate your feedback on. So as you start to get the actual red lines, then instead of saying, hey, this should be 10 or this should be 12, you know, hey, these are the things that we really super like to focus on. And then if you have some technical expertise on something, feel free to bring that to the table. But I do think that there are some things that we would love to hear and have some conversation on with the Planning Commission. So we'll talk through those and then we'll just go through the timeline really quickly. So the, just again, we're going to start out with just kind of some background and how we got to where we are. We actually started the discussion about community design in the fall of 2020 when we kicked off the visioning and we had conversations with the community about, hey, do we want the entire community to look the same or do we want to have distinction between each of our centers? And what would that be? What would we like to see in downtown and Overlake? And all of those things also rolled into how much growth we're going to put in there. So how tall the buildings are going to be and all those things. So we actually really had some really in-depth conversations on community design for the last five years. So now we're leading into the specifics and the details of this, but it's all based on that feedback that people do really want their differentiation in the community. They want the neighborhoods to have an individualized feel. Years and years of conversation about inclusive design priorities and incentives. And again, very, very specific community updates for Overlake and downtown. For the last couple of years, we've had a lot of downtown-specific conversations. And then we learned from those conversations about things that could then become something that is updated citywide. And so the approach really has been multifaceted in just gathering information about what the community wants and needs and is looking for. And then the implementation, the first pass of that really went into effect January 1. We did a lot of design-related conversations that did end up in the Overlake package, especially as we started to talk about, there's some parking garage pieces in there, but there's also the new towers and there's some other things in there as well that we did make sure went into effect at the same time that we'd upsot over Lake. So that was like the first pass. And again, as we started to go through the downtown, those things really are underway and we're getting those out. And now we have some legislative updates that we need to roll out this year as well. And we're using this opportunity also to do that consolidation and restructuring. And that work will continue. Design standards will not finish up this year. So again, in our joint meeting with council, we highlighted and provide another link back if anybody wants to take a look at that, what's in this package versus what's coming. But really, really super high level, we're looking at urban forums and we're kicking off information about these incentives. And again, those clear purpose statements, we are rolling out some new illustrations. We're looking at context. We're looking at sustainability. We're looking at active-use retail. And we have a whole brand-new section on universal design. And then in next year, there's again, there's going to be a lot more coming out, the climate resiliency, the more inclusive and welcoming design, but also those things that we just didn't have the resources to update. In this package, there's a lot of topics. We'll just continue to make sure that we're updating them, bringing them up to modern standards, to urban standards, to those inclusive and sustainability goals. So we'll keep moving forward. So what this is, is that last package of what goes into effect on June 30th. And so bright and early July 1, we're going to have a completely new reorganized zoning. And so we will only have 2158 and a much, much smaller 2162 because everything that is design standards related that is not town center is actually moving into 2158. Similarly to what we did with our parking and open space and landscaping, we're just pulling it all up into one spot to make it easier for people to find and also avoid conflicts. So I'm, before I turn it over to Kim to explain a little bit what she was hearing a little bit more than what I mentioned, in your packet, we did provide a lot of links to that community resources and the reports and what we did with community engagement on community design. But I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Kim and she can talk about the downtown specific and the things that you really are going to see reflected in what's coming to you.
Thank you, Becky. So as Becky mentioned, we focused a lot earlier in the downtown, the design standards for the downtown, and that was because there was a downtown update, its policies and regulations taking place. And so we used that as an opportunity to also talk about design. To do that, we started in 2023 using a consultant and using as many staff as we could get to come out and literally walk and talk with us. We wanted to set a foundation for our level of understanding and understanding, you know, what are some of the issues that our staff are seeing when designs come into the city? Where are they unable to match a proposed design with the code? Or where are some areas where they see opportunities for strengthening our code to improve the design? We had public works staff who was able to talk about the waste management. We had police who were able to talk about different points of access into building, fire, who would regularly need to access a building to test the fire suppression system. So we tried to include the wide perspective of the city in a walk and talk. But mainly what we were wondering about was, as you walk in the city hall area and look at the new development that is in close proximity to city hall, we were starting to see some of the same things. And we wanted to learn from folks if that was okay. And if not, if that wasn't okay, what were some of their ideas to start to steer design in a more innovative or creative manner? So we joined Derby Days as well as the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, and you can see that pictured here. What we did is we asked the community what they liked about design. Now, it's hard to point out specifically what you like or what you don't like, but when you see it, you'll know it. So we created these paddles, little sticks with a building on it. And what our intent was, that people could point to a building and tell us what they liked about it. And then we'd record that on the back of the little paddle. But what ended up happening was even more interesting, that people started to pick a couple paddles. They say, they would say, well, this is what I would like to see in downtown. So Becky, if you go to the next slide, what happened was we learned about the different themes that the community was interested in. We also, after Derby Days and the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, we held a Let's Connect so that we could use those same images. And for people that wanted to spend a little bit more time exploring them, they could use the Let's Connect virtual platform to tell us more. But it kept coming back to these themes here that we could then apply in design standards. For example, Becky mentioned active retail earlier, and that's something that we can apply at the ground floor, requirement or an opportunity. Outdoor living spaces, again, specific to design, the way that a building relates to the sidewalk as well as how maybe it steps back from the sidewalk or the way it treats its roof. So these were all, these are all of the things that you will see carried out in the new proposal for design standards. And Becky, if you go to the next slide. The design standards are, actually, go back one. There we go, perfect. The design standards are organized by topic. So you saw that list of topics on the previous slide. Well, very similarly, we are orienting all of the standards by topic so that for an applicant or for staff, if they're dealing with an entryway, they'll be able to easily find entryway in the list of different topics or the sections that will be in the code. Okay, now next slide. These are the principles that we use. So by using principles, it helps us ensure that we are reflecting the city's vision, the community's vision, our long-term policies and goals, our growth patterns, but also we are reflecting other plans, standards, functional plans, strategic plans, and the city standard details for construction. Also, we are reflecting the city's priorities such as inclusivity, accessibility, and canopy coverage. So we're trying to think of a lot of different perspectives as we developed these standards. And what we used was a purpose statement. So the purpose statement allows us to speak in a more broad sense to these principles as well as the themes that the community identified. And then the standards help us identify how the building itself or the site itself would implement that vision. So the vision's a little bit more wordy, a little bit more picturesque, where the standards are oriented toward measurements, they're clear and objective. Next slide. House Bill 1293 came after we started our original work, and this requires cities to provide clear and objective design standards. The standards must provide directions so that any individual reading the standard or applying the standard, reviewing a project for that standard, would get to the same result. Measurements and prescriptive standards ensure that the regulations are ascertainable and they avoid reducing the height, the bulk, and the scale that is allowed by the underlying zone. Okay, so those are very specific provisions in that bill that must be met by all cities. And then the next slide has a little bit more. Oh, I think, yeah, we're there, okay. So in addition, design review must be carried out concurrent to the regulatory or landers' review. Now, what that means is that a planner, when they're reviewing a project for development, they're looking at the environment as well as design, as well as the floor area allowed, as well as the uses that are allowed. They're looking at it all in one pass, and it gives them the opportunity to think, well, if the applicant needs to change one piece in this area, how will that affect other pieces in their project? And it also reduces the timeframe for development review, which is also in accordance with state law. Only one public meeting can be held for the community to provide comments on applications for development. And so you may recall, a few months ago, you did review code that took away our design review board. The review of the design of buildings happens at the administrative level or at the staff level, and then they report to our technical committee their recommendation. So our proposed approach is to provide, again, the purpose statement that each design aspect would be explained. It would include an intent for that particular design element. The standards would be measurable. And any indication of whether there is design flexibility, that would be supported for projects that say meet or possibly exceed. The purpose of an individual design element would also be called out. So we'll use that same approach for every design element to make it predictable and clear for all users. Okay, Becky, would you like to take over again?
So a lot of what we are focusing on in this package really is that, that human scale, that sense of place. There's a significant focusing on designing with the context of the site, with your neighbors, with the environment and whatnot. And then there's just a lot of these pieces. So these themes of design excellence were really rolled into a lot of the work. But what that means and the attention to detail of what's happening in this particular package is really, really taking a look at that street level, the pedestrian experience, and how it differentiates. Like, you don't need the same level of detail higher up as you do on the ground floor. But how do we make sure that we're not overwhelming that pedestrian experience? How do we make it engaging and lively and pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly and how that environment works together, that pedestrian realm building interaction? But we're also trying to activate those upper-level spaces, so the podium and rooftops, and trying to make sure that they're activated. So there's a little bit of a dichotomy going on there, but we're very intentionally looking at those spaces in different ways. So you'll see that in several sections. Let's go for it. And then, of course, just integrating that full support for mass timber and making sure that anybody who does want to do that building type can do it with ease and has the flexibility to move it forward. So I'm going to shift gears really quickly and in this next section, just want to walk So I'm going to shift gears really quickly, and in this next section, just want to walk through the organization and point out where the major changes are happening. So in this brand-new 2158, the first thing you'll see up at the top is just some introduction information, that the purpose statement for the entire chapter, a couple of context-related, when does things apply and when does it not apply? And then we dive down into the content, starting with 1000, which is that context-sensitive design. A lot of things have been moved into there, but there is some new stuff in there. And then we have the brand-new universal design section. So that's a whole section that's specifically to implementing universal design. This first rollout is to support the incentives for universal design. Additional work in the future and other projects will continue to roll out those pieces. But it's to support those incentives, and it's also to support the Marymore Inclusive Design Pilot Neighborhood. So that's the focus of 2000 right now. 3000 is where you're going to see a lot of changes, and we'll walk through that here in a second. Site design creativity, 4000, 5000, 6000. There's some changes in there, but really the bulk of the changing in standards is really going to happen in 3000. So again, when we introduce this, we talked about how we want to be consistent in each of those sections. So as you get to each of those content pieces, you'll see a purpose statement up at the top as Kim mentioned, the actual standards, and then if there is flexibility, how it would be flexible and why it would be flexible and what the standards would be so that staff and the community who's looking for that has some predictability with the flexibility. They know if that would be approved or not. So what you see in the next couple of slides is if it is in yellow, it is new or major content. If it's in white, it's either basically just been moved or it's just have some minor updates and some clarifications that might have happened. Or it might be the purpose statement was updated just to make sure that we got there. But white is not a substantial change in the actual regulation, whereas yellow would be new or a substantial change. As you can see here, that context-sensitive design is a mixture. We already have, you know, how do you relate to shorelines? How do you wait to all of these, you know, central connector? You know, how do you relate to the neighboring manufacturing park? So we do have a lot of regulations already, but they were scattered in a lot of different places. And so bringing them all together helps you understand all of the different things that you would think of from a contextual standpoint. Again, 2000 is brand-new. So we're looking at the checklist in the incentive program, you know, what qualifies? How do you know if you're installing a restroom that would meet the standard for the adult changing table, right? So all of those things, how do you meet the incentive restrictions are now in this new 2000 section, including the visitability, and then looking at those specific features. And then when we get into 3000, the actual building standards, building form and scale, the street wall, the breaks, the step backs, corner lots, those are really major changes as we start to look at building form. And then from there on, it's really the details, right? So we're going into how do you want to do weather protection? How do we want to do materials? How do we want to do details and ornamentation? So 3000 has a significant amount of overhaul or brand-new content. So we recommend, as you start to review this, that you put a lot of your time and attention to really going through and understanding what that looks like. And then in 4000, you'll see that really not a lot of changes happening in there. We did do the legislative review, so most of the changes that you'll see in 4000 are related to the legislative review. And so there's going to be some things moving forward to look forward to there and making sure that it's clear from the perspective of what you're expecting. But a lot of those will get updated in the next round. In 5000, again, it's just moving things together into locations that are about special regulations. So your parking garage standards are going to be here, your screening, those types of things are actually moved in here. The tower regulations that we just adopted for Overlake, those have just been moved over into here as well. The one thing that is new is the mass timber section. This section will basically just say if the materials need a slight deviation in order to actually utilize the material, or if you need to make a change to meet the mass timber building codes, that that would be allowed. So it doesn't give you a hurdle just because the standards were built on a typical, a typical construction. So that is, again, it's really just to make sure that mass timber buildings can be built in the way that mass timber buildings need to be built. And so, again, you'll see that there's a lot of yellow in some places, and there's a lot of white in other places. And so we wanted to point that out to you so that you can understand where the change is happening in this package. And then, again, where you see white, those are things that'll be looked at more comprehensively in future projects. We do want to mention too, though, that one of the things that is coming to you intentionally is it's a significantly more flexibility built into the code. Again, I mentioned mass timber, but there's also art, alternative design standards for architecturally-integrated art and those green walls and pulling those things together. We have expanded administrative design flexibility on almost every case where it was allowed. In some cases where it wasn't allowed, we've now allowed it. And so most things do have administrative design flexibility, and so we've fleshed that out. Some places we don't because we actually need something very specific. And so what's coming next to you is going to be the package. We do think that we'll have to bring it to you in two parts. We'll get some sections to you and get you reading through. It is only about 90 pages, so it's less than the package you have in front of you today. But it is not a small package. So we'll bring it to you in two chunks, probably. These are the questions that we were hoping to get you thinking about as you start to review them. We did a lot of consolidation. Did you spot a duplicate that we haven't caught yet as we started to consolidate everything? Or did something go missing that you knew of that just isn't there anymore? And you don't understand why it's not there? Some things were deleted on purpose. Some things we're just not going to regulate anymore because it doesn't meet the legislative standard. Some things we just have decided to shift our attention and focus on other things and not worry about regulating those as well. But if there's something that you think is missing that shouldn't be missing, or if there's anything that's out of place, is the organization just not logical to you at all? Or does something not make sense? Those are super helpful, but what we really, really, really love the planning commission to do their review and really have at the front of your brain is does this reflect the Redmond 2050's vision? And specifically on the purpose statements, do you understand the goal and objective? And do you feel like we're getting to the point that everybody will read this and understand what the outcome of that is going to be? If there's anything else you'd love to review for, we'd love to hear it. But we were really hoping that those things would be in the front of your mind, and we have some really in-depth discussion about those as we start to look at the drafts. You, again, will start to see those. We are aiming for a March 26 public hearing, but we are hoping to get through the planning commission conversations about this at the end of April. We want to go to council for review in May and June with a council adoption in June. And again, all of the code packages will be adopted with the same effective date of June 30th so that we can make sure that everything goes into effect all at once, and they're all tied together. That is our briefing for today, but we would love to get some initial thoughts or answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? I might, oh, Commissioner Van Dymen.
So I know we obviously focus on the big buildings that we're building downtown in Marymore and everywhere. But like, where in here would one find, like, the concept of, you know, building a cottage development?
So we do have a section for residential, but the cottage-style development now will not have as many specific requirements as it did in the past. Ian, I don't know if you want to...
I would love to, Becky. Hello, Ian Lefkort, He-Him, Senior Planner. Becky is right, one of the primary considerations of the residential regulations package that was before the commission last summer was trying to square the circle of we have all these new middle housing typologies, how do we provide clean streamlined design standards for all of them? And the approach was largely less is more while still providing that kind of menu approach we've applied for design standards elsewhere, where we say there's six design features that are acceptable for development. You have to pick four, and then we define each of them, and they're all objective and measurable and all that good stuff. Cottages were a bit warranted some additional paragraphs in the code just because they can have slightly different orientations and considerations. But to the thrust of your question, the design standards for those cottages have already been adopted, and they are largely likely to take place in zones that are more dispersed through our community.
So if I can piggyback on that. So something like a cottage development as it's existed for the past decade-plus wouldn't continue to exist in the new design requirements? Or it's just, it's been kind of streamlined, simplified, modernized? Like, how would you characterize that?
More to the latter.
Another question that I had, that was one of my questions, so thank you, Commissioner Van Dymen. Another question that I had was just if someone could speak to why 2158 doesn't include Town Center?
Go ahead, Kim.
Town Center was adopted recently and was adopted consistent with a development plan. And so we didn't want to start to fiddle with that while it's still in the process of being reviewed. So it's a project that's actually in for review. So we really didn't want to change the regulations midpoint or even a third of the way through their review. So we wanted to maintain that consistency.
And if additional projects came in in the meantime there, would that... Are we just saying we'd wait until this round of development has reached, has sort of settled, and then...
Within Town Center or elsewhere?
And then update later, or what's the goal there?
We'll have to get back to you on the status of it, but I do know that they are currently working with staff on what is, what was, what is their development agreement in accordance with the current regulations for the Town Center Zone.
In the end, our hope is that they don't need to have their own section.
That's sort of what I was getting at is just at what point, if that's visible at this point, what point they would merge together? Or if it's for the foreseeable future, they would stay separated out?
I don't think that's been defined yet.
That's fine. Other commissioners? I just want to say, I know we've seen parts of this deck before, but every time I see it, I just, I love the buildings in it. It's very, it'll be interesting to see how this translates to code, but it's just, it's a very hopeful view of Redmond to me. Commissioner Van Dymen?
I don't remember what the word is. I want to go back to way back at the beginning. There was a phrase, I just wanted a definition, I didn't know what it meant, where we were talking about the different types of... I should have written it down. We go back to the beginning.
The process or a little bit later?
Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Oh, right there, no, back. Oh, no, that wasn't it. Okay, go again. And again. Oh, shoot. Passive system, what does that mean?
Yes, that's a form of development. There are actually two ways to do a passive building with passive systems. One is that it's mechanized for passive controls of the building. The other is that it is unmechanized. And so what it provides is a way that the sun can be warming and the shade elements can be cooling, and that air can then circulate through the building. So it offers different opportunities to, say, use the solar heat in order to gain warmth and release that through the building without the use of or complementary to existing heating systems. So it's an energy-saving system. It's also a way to build natural comfort. And you can see examples of that in Seattle as well as Issaquah. But most commonly, you'll see that used in the southern parts of the US, the southwest is used commonly.
One final question that I had was just, and this doesn't have to be this time, but just overall, I'm a little bit in need of reminders on how the technical committee works now and if they're the ones reviewing whether or not the design standards are met. This is a little bit process.
Okay.
We can actually go into a little bit more of that detail, but generally, staff will review a project, and they will make a recommendation. If there are any, say, deviations, they'll review the project in accordance with the request for deviation. They will identify any additional needs for information. So ultimately, they'll deem that a project has submitted everything they need to submit, and then they'll review it against the code. Part of that would be the design standards. So once they make their final recommendation, it's in the form of a letter, and it goes through all the different levels of the code, all the different levels of design standards, and shows how the project met or did not meet those particular standards. That then goes to the technical committee, and then, again, this is based on a permit type. So that would mean that the technical committee would be the authority to make the final decision on that project. And they'll review it with a presentation that staff delivers to the technical committee, which is the Director of Planning and Public Works, but equally attended by many of our other directors and managers. And then they will make a decision during that meeting. Those are held during the day here at City Hall.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
My question's about how the design standards, looking forward, will mix in with the buildings that are already here in terms of things like, hey, you know, we've got some, certainly in downtown, some buildings that were relatively new not that long ago, but now may not fit the standards. So how do you think about the mix moving forward? And also, if there's any retrofitting needed for a building, what that should be if it's already in place under previous kind of guidance?
Go ahead, Becky.
I'm thinking that that won't be an issue because one of the things that we're working really hard on in the code is kind of forcing diversity of building form, right? And so just because they might look a little different than what we're moving forward with does not necessarily mean that they won't fit in the hole because we're really trying to encourage different shapes, different heights, different colors. So the buildings that do today look really similar to each other. They stand out because those are the buildings that are there today. But as we start to fill in around them with new, the sameness will start to ease off a little bit because they'll be mixed up with other buildings that will look different, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I'm actually pleased to hear you saying about... I'm actually pleased to hear you saying about sameness, because I do think, you know, walking and talking to people, that's the thing I kind of hear, like, hey, this feels like other places or feels the same in terms of buildings, so that's great.
Yeah, that was actually one of the most frequent comments we received about downtown, is it just felt like sameness over and over again. We really paid attention to that. The team that's working on this is a team that Kim led on the downtown, but also our team that was looking at the development standards themselves. That's one of the reasons why that conversation we had about the 60 to 65, we ended up with the recommendation moving forward to, is kind of, again, it pushes, like, different buildings would have different heights, right? So our entire approach to, the entire team has been trying to make sure that we have a more diverse form of our community. Kim, was there something you wanted to add?
No, that was great. Thanks, Becky.
Commissioner Copely?
On Commissioner Van Eyman's question about passive systems, there is a green building in Capitol Hill, the Bullet Center, that is the greenest commercial building in the world. Really awesome example of passive systems. If anyone's ever over there, highly recommend taking a tour of the building.
Along those lines, something to point out, that in your package that you approved tonight in 2116, just a reminder, one of the edits in that chapter was to make sure that if you have a passive house or mast timber or some other green building technique, that you needed to have some type of projection into the setback or building height in order to install that system, that that would be allowed. And so that's one of the edits that we made into 2116.
All right, Commissioners, other questions? All right, thank you for this, and we will look forward to seeing more of it soon. I think we're going to take a brief break, probably five minutes, and we will be back at eight. For functional plans with Glenn Coyle.
Hey, Glenn, we can't hear you at all.
Maybe we could start this slide again, if you're willing? And if your mic can be at you.
Yeah. Hola, hola, okay.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, so this is slide three. I just, just to reiterate for the public, we will be defining and explaining the role and purpose of functional plans, how they relate to the comp plan, and why the commission reviews them. In this slide, before I go into detail about functional plans, I'll show that, kind of the hierarchy of vision to plan into operations in Redmond. The comp plan provides the long-term, high-level vision for the city. Functional strategic plans go into much more detail and define how that vision will be implemented. This in turn leads to the actual financing and implementation of that vision through our capital projects, such as building roads and community centers, city programs, such as an environmental sustainability program, or events like Derby Days, as well as the development enforcement of regulations in the Redmond Municipal Code and zoning code. So what exactly are functional plans? Basically, functional plans are Redmond's strategic plans for facilities and infrastructure. Not all cities use this term, but has been used in Redmond's comp plan for many years. Generally, we use this term to refer to the functional areas of the city, public safety, parks, water, stormwater, and the plans for them that have a significant capital component. This slide shows some functional plans we have in the city. We also have other strategic plans that do not have significant capital facilities planning components, such as the Housing Action Plan, the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, Human Service Strategic Plan, or the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan, as an example. So this leads us back to the capital facilities planning component of functional plans. These plans also serve other purposes and fulfill other requirements, such as state and federal. But for tonight, I want to highlight that these plans are also used to fulfill capital facilities planning requirements under the Growth Management Act, namely for the comprehensive plan. Because these plans can be very long, we have comp plan policies detailing what is needed in functional plans to be used to fulfill comprehensive plan requirements. These are shown in the capital facilities element, namely Policies Capital Facilities 1 through 4. These policies also note that the plans are adopted into the comp plan and the process for such. And just as a reminder, more detail on this, if this is in too much detail, is found in the memo. And this slide just shows the legal process for adopting functional plans. Essentially, it is a comp plan element, which is a Type 6 process. This includes the public, the planning commission holding a public hearing and providing a recommendation to the council. A council adopts by ordinance. This slide shows what and how the commission reviews. They use a decision criteria to show how the plans meet this said criteria. And we also want to note that our evaluation criteria has been updated as part of Redmond 2050. Commissioners should also consider how plans meet the GMA requirements and other city requirements, such as those listed in Policy, Capital Facilities Policy Number 2. I will point out at this time that staff does a lot of this initial work showing how the plans meet these criteria. Before the planning commission, it goes through a technical committee review, which is provided to the commission as a report. So, you might be asking, if staff does all the work, what is our role? I would respond, yes, there is some legal technical requirements, which are more pro-former, but the evaluation criteria is also subjective, and is an opportunity for the commission to look at the bigger picture of how the plan fits into the city's vision and goals, as well as gives direction to achieve that. This slide shows the evaluation criteria the commission shall use. As you can see, there is not always a binary yes or no to these criteria. Too much time to read that. It's also noted in the packet. This slide shows the Growth Management Act requirements for capital facilities planning. These can be centered more of a yes/no checklist, in the sense that is the plan covering these items. Slide nine shows Capital Facilities Policy CF2, as I noted earlier. It includes the GMA requirements that I just showed in the previous slide, and has additional components related to city's operations and kind of strategic direction. So what functional plans are being updated? In 2025, you will see Stormwater and Surface Water Systems Plan. That will be our first for that, something we've been wanting to do for many years. Our Capital Facilities Plan, that's for government facilities, and that's a Phase 2. The commission adopted the Phase 1, which was just kind of a six-year window as part of Redmond 2050, and the idea is to extend that to the year 2050. The previous, the one we just passed goes to like 2030 or so. Fire Strategic Plan, they're updating their facilities plan to include planning for like new stations and things like that. And our Transportation Master Plan is being updated. I should also note that the Transportation Master Plan will most likely come to commission on the first quarter of 2026. But some components of the TMP, as we call it, have been adopted as part of Redmond 2050, like specifically the Transportation Facilities Plan, which in turn goes back, supports some of our other planning things, so. And this slide goes into more detail on the planning commission process. First, and you'll see this for a lot of amendments and things like that, so first there's a briefing. Staff will provide an overview of the plan and process, and may share an early draft if available. Commissioners may provide any feedback and comments. Staff may also answer commissioners' questions. The questions should be limited to the commission's review scope. From that, we will have a study session where staff will present the final draft for commissioners' review and public comment. Staff will demonstrate how the functional plans fulfill the city's review criteria and CF2 requirements. From there, we will have a public hearing. The commission will hold a public hearing in order to receive public comment on the functional plan as required by law. Commissioners may continue a study session as needed to discuss the plan. If discussion is complete, commissioners may discuss and vote on a recommendation. And from there, as needed, commissioners may continue and conclude a study session on their review of the functional plan. If discussion is complete, commissioners shall discuss and vote on a recommendation. When a recommendation is made, staff will prepare a final planning commission report. And then from there, planning commission will review the report and recommendation to ensure it is consistent with their review and vote, and will vote to approve the report, which will be transmitted to council. And so, to end this, here are some links to recent functional plans, as well as the PC reports related to them. So up here, you'll see the Water System Plan, which was an update of earlier, functional plan update, the Wastewater Plan, we saw. And then those links there are also just the PC reports related to that, so the Park Plan, et cetera, so. Thank you.
Commissioners, any feedback or questions, including on the evaluation criteria or our scope? All right. Maybe if anyone does, as they're thinking through this, if anyone wants additional feedback, as always, just reach out to staff, and they can help guide the right way. Thank you for this. All right, so with that, we are going to move on to our second training of the evening. This is a briefing on training for the annual comprehensive plan docket. Again, Glenn Coyle.
Hi again. I'm Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner in Redmond's Planning and Community Development Department. Tonight, we will go over the comp plan, comprehensive plan amendment process, and provide an overview of the commission's review process. Keeping the comprehensive plan updated assures that it remains a useful and relevant guide for planning Redmond's future. The purpose of establishing the docket is to coordinate proposed changes and to help the community track progress. Per state law, Redmond may update its comprehensive plan once a year. Comp plan amendments are a Type 6 process, as I just mentioned, for functional plans. The planning commission seeks public comment on all proposed amendments through public hearings and makes a recommendation. The city council is the decision-maker for proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Establishing the annual docket. First, the city informs the community and staff of the opportunity to submit proposals to amend the comprehensive plan. After proposed changes are identified, the planning commission and then the city council review and confirm the list of amendments, known as the docket, to be considered over the course of the year. And this just kind of shows the process there of docket and kind of some related dates. The planning commission's responsibility is to review whether the applications meet the The Planning Commission's responsibility is to review whether the applications meet the criteria for being added to the annual docket and make a recommendation to the City Council. This is in the zoning code and is shown at right. And as you can see, there's, uh, six criteria. Okay, this next slide shows, um, the process after the docket is established. It basically consists of further Planning Commission review, uh, using the evaluation criteria, holding a public hearing, and making a recommendation to council. So it's similar to the docketing process, but a little bit more, uh, deeper evaluation. Slide seven, seven shows the decision criteria, or as we say, also evaluation criteria is another term. And this slide's a little bit different than you just saw in the functional plans. Uh, as I noted, that, uh, our evaluation criteria was updated as part of the Redmond 2050 process. Uh, so the blue bold and cross oats, uh, show the changes done for Redmond 2050. I won't read through those, eh, because I can't really see it, but, uh, we did, but you can note that we added some, um, additional items for consideration as we, um, as we do that, including economic impacts. Now I'm testing my eyes, uh, and ability to the city to provide those services, as an example. Okay, slide 8 shows examples of past docket items, both city-initiated and privately. It's a wastewater plan in 2021, Evans Creek relocation was a land use map amendment. And then some of the privately initiated ones, there was an update to our Economic Vitality Element, uh, really related to supporting local businesses, affordable commercial spaces. Um, that was a policy we maintained in the, uh, Redmond 2050 update, uh, because this, that, that docket amendment actually came just before Redmond 2050, but we ensured, because it was a new amendment, that we kept that policy, a little bit revised language, but we, that policy was maintained there. Um, and then it's kind of, some of the commissions might be remember, uh, the Redmond Town Center Amendment, um, on the Town Center Zone. So those are kind of past examples. And last slide here shows our proposed schedule for establishing the docket this year. Right now, we're accepting applications, and then, um, that due date is April 1st. And then in May, uh, we're looking to have a study session, um, and a public hearing late May. By June, we are looking for a recommendation, report approval, and then we will send it to council over the summer. And, um, you know, if all goes well, uh, council will, um, adopt that docket, and then it will come back to commission, uh, for the deeper evaluation into next year. And again, kind of begin the, re- redo the process, do, you know, PC report and all that, and then go back to council, so. Thank you.
All right, I found this very helpful. Um, Commissioners, any feedback or questions? Commissioner Cooley.
Got takers on this one.
Last week, uh, staff recommended we be gentle with our new baby, meaning the new Redmond 2050, the zoning code. Given those expectations and given just the freshness of this code package, what would be appropriate things to pay attention to, or what things might you flag to us that would be appropriate for docket items, given the freshness of all of this new, you know, code?
So this goes back, I put slide 5 back up, is kind of the docketing threshold criteria. And really, i- it is that, um, but it's really the appropriateness, um, is it consistent with the comp plan? You know, i- is it fixing little minor things, or is it something way beyond the pale of maybe, um, what was done in the recent Comprehensive Plan? Because again, as you know, we're not looking for big, big changes, especially this much out the gate, you know. Our comp plans are updated every 10 years, and of course, over the next five, eight years, you can see where directions might change and everything. So at this point, I would see it more as maybe technical corrections or something that, you know, should have been addressed, or could have been addressed better in the Comprehensive Plan, which we know is a really big update, so there, there's a lot of different things there, so. So it's kind of hard to, what the expectations are of receiving, and I think Becky wants, uh, to add something?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I also want to point out that there's a couple of projects, like parcel-specific requests that came through, or, and you received comment letters from folks that really didn't fit well with the, uh, Redmond 2050 either, because it didn't fit into CIPA analysis, or I just missed the timing of certain types of evaluations. Um, and so there were a couple of specific parcel-related projects that may pop back up as an annual docket, um, just because they, the, for some reason, they just didn't fit into the Redmond 2050 context and work plan. Um, there is also certain things that city staff might be moving forward that might need an annual docket process to get approval for, um, and so there might be some things, um, the functional plans that, that are coming forward this year do fall under the Redmond 2050 CIPA and process. And so they, they wouldn't need that annual docket to get approved, but there might be something else that a department's working on that, that we don't know of right now, that, that might come through, that might need that approval process. So those are the types of things that might, um, come to you as an annual docket that, um, have, are fair, totally legitimate, uh, requests that wouldn't necessarily be in conflict with Redmond 2050. They might just be moving on from it, if that makes sense.
Yep, that's great. Commissioner Van Dymen.
So does this move through as one package, like all of, everything that gets?
Yes, we, we packaged the different, um, there's actually a requirement in state law that, uh, talks about that all the amendments should be, um, evaluated kind of in a cumulative, comprehensive sense. Like, obviously, if one thing cancels out, and, you know, if there's a, a proposal to change this, and there's another proposal that says the opposite, obviously, that would not, uh, jive together. So, yeah, we do look at it as a whole, individually and as a whole, but it does go as a package together, all the different amendments.
And then just to follow up on that for clarification, are individual, do we do what we do in our most recent process where we're saying like yes to this, no to that? Or like, how do, how does the commission actually break down?
So like, let's say, and we won't go into detailed example, but let's say there's four proposals. The, the Planning Commission agrees that three should move forward and one doesn't. It would just be pretty much, that would be the recommendation in the report. And then council is actually the final operator of that. They could say, we don't think any of these should be on the docket. We agree with commission, these three should be. Or maybe we think, oh, oh, well, maybe all four need to be on there. It's, but it's ultimately, yeah, in the Planning Commission's report or recommendation, you would kind of break down each of those ones and kind of, yeah.
Great. Um, Commissioner Coleman? Oh, sorry, I'm gonna let Becky actually answer that, and then we'll keep going.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to just jump in really quickly to add that. So they, once they get on the docket, they have to do a combined CIPA under state law. Uh, but that's necessarily, again, you don't have to prove them all, but you do have to do a combined CIPA. But Planning Commission at both points can make a recommendation to, uh, move it forward, or stop it, or make a re- recommendation to defer it, uh, to a different annual docket, or because maybe we don't have the resources to do it right now, maybe, but we don't want to like kick it out forever. Um, so you do have those three recom, options for recommendations to make on any item at both stages.
Okay, got it. Uh, Vice Chair Woodier.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you have a sense of what the volume or magnitude is that we can expect through the docket process?
So for this year, um, we're not really sure, um, we're not really, I mean, and I say we're not sure, it's like, we're not really expecting many, like maybe one or two or three. Uh, we never know, um, as, as Becky noted, our functional plans normally would go through a docket process, but because they're part of the Redmond 2050 scope, those aren't coming through the docket process. So that's already four documents or four plans that are not going through the docket process. Um, so, but in the past, um, generally speaking, we've seen per docket maybe two, one or two city-initiated items, maybe two or three publicly-initiated items. And, and some of those had, as Becky, and this gets really technical, some had been deferred to other, like, dockets. So they've been kind of, you know, somewhere around for a couple of years and kind of like, well, should this be on the 2016 docket? No, let's put it on the 17 or the 18, um, you know, or, or I'd say privately-initiated ones, that, you know, the person, uh, the group might be pushing for that for a multiple, over multiple years, so. But generally, yeah, three to four-ish.
Commissioner Coleman.
First, I want to thank Vice Chair Woodie for asking my question. Perfect. Um, I do have another question. Thanks a lot. No, that's good, that was great. Um, I was just curious, are we, um, do, does it include the why? Like, or is the why just part of the conversation? Do we just say yea or nay for, for them, or do you collect the why as, if we say no to something?
Well, in terms of the docketing threshold criteria, uh, it's really just, it is more of a meets or does not meet. Um, you, the commission is happy, you know, is, can provide as much elaboration on that, um, as, as they choose.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you've, if you've put, if you've spent time to ask for, uh, you know, wh- what are these amendments? That you'd probably want to know why, and I was just, just wondering whether that's actually something, it's, it's an expectation.
And to clarify your question, are you asking about the threshold criteria to get on the docket? Or are you talking about the accurate, actual recommendation at the end, like including the rationale in the recommendation?
It's the la, it's the latter.
Okay. Glenn's answer is still the same?
It's really, again, we fall back to the thresh, the docketing threshold criteria, but it's, it's the commission's discretion if they want to provide any reason, rationale, you know. That's really, you know, ultimately a jar report and recommendation.
If you go to slide 7, though, um, with the evaluation criteria, do we provide rationale in this as part of our recommendation, or?
Again, it's, it's more discretion. I mean, at, at the minimum, the Plan Can, Commission can say, the technical committee report looks great, check looks, looks great, we recommend. That's the minimum. You know, the maximum, every single commissioner could write its own, uh, recommendation with a full 50-page, uh, evaluation as they choose. And, and everything's always somewhat in the middle, but it's probably more towards, you know, that, if it fills the requirements, we're happy with that. Or, you know, there has been past discussions where like, on this process, we're like, well, we recommend maybe this proposal should be changed a little bit here, or, and that's where we kind of have a little bit of back and forth, say, with the, the person that, the applicant, um, that says, well, maybe this part is not consistent with Redmond 2050. We recommend to council that this proposal be changed, A, B, and C. And, and that's, um, if you go back to the Town Center Amendment Process, I think that's a really great recent example, where the commission kind of worked with the applicant on some of the language. Um, you know, commissioner partner, uh, really had a lot of feedback in terms of some of the green building requirements and incentives and things like that. So that, that's where the opportunity to kind of have that little bit of back and forth and, you know, provide kind of a bespoke kind of recommendation. And Becky, sorry.
I do want to clarify that, though, that the why is always included in there in some place. Um, the staff evaluation will include the whys, it'll include some explanatory, uh, how they got to that conclusion. When it gets to the Planning Commission, your debate will include, hey, we agree or we don't agree. Uh, that'll all get documented. Um, when it comes down to if something, when an action is taken, approval, denial, whatever it might be, it could be challenged to the Growth Management Hearings Board, right? And so at that point, what they're looking for is the city has, has we documented our process? Have we documented all the things that we considered? And so that actually is a part of, uh, the process in and of itself, is that we're tracking what we're talking about and why we made the decision that we made. So it all gets documented somewhere. Um, but if all of the documentation comes to you, you read it all from the Tech Committee and Staff Committee, and, and there is no necessarily debate, your why is, I approve this and I agree with that what's in the packet, right? Uh, but all of that, the evaluation will be a part of the, the recommendation.
Okay, that's helpful. We're seeing a lot of nodding here. Um, I had another question about remands. Um, so the Town Center was a good example of this, where a Planning Commission decision went to council, and then they remanded it back to us to reconsider. I know that was based partly on the timing of 2050. Um, is that something you would expect us to see in the next year or two, or is it generally?
Uh, that's a case-by-case basis.
So things could come back?
Those are issues that had a lot of, you know, um, community feedback, and there was a desire to have more community discussion on that. Um, and then another reason why it would come back is if there's substantial changes, the Planning Commission has to hold another public hearing. Um, so in that Town Center example, you know, commission, either the council was looking for some changes, and with that, you know, they provided their recommendations back to Planning Commission, and that, you know, set off a process of having a new public hearing, because the Planning Commission is where the public hearing is being held. So that would be an exception.
It's not that common, though.
Okay. Great. Other question, oh, Commissioner Van Dymen.
Can you go back to the timing slide, the schedule? So, um, okay, the proposed Planning Commission meeting schedule for establishing the docket. Oh, that doesn't have a specific date on it. So I guess my question was, what I didn't quite understand was, when we have slated things, when we've gone through and said, we think three of these four should proceed, we don't think one of them meets the criteria, that then goes to City Council and they also are addressing the docket? Whether, whether it's on the docket or not?
Yes, they actually adopt a res, um, an ordinance establishing the docket.
Okay.
So the first, there's two steps to the process.
Got it, got it.
And this is the first step.
Commissioner Cooley.
Looks like slide 7. I'm curious around the reasoning behind the striking of the language around no net loss of housing capacity.
I think my colleague Ian might be able to speak to that.
I'd have to review the specific decision criteria. We probably have some staff notes, but that does certainly raise an eyebrow, and I will follow up on it.
Any other questions? All right, this has been super helpful. Thank you very much. And again, um, same as with functional plans, if you have further questions, please write to staff. All right, next up is staff and commissioner updates. Ian.
Hello, Commissioners. Uh, we have our usual meetings coming up, and the main item before you is about the Planning Commission Annual Workshop. We have two asks to the commission. The first is to please check your schedules and message staff to confirm that April 30th is the appropriate time. Uh, we had a kind of tentative landing on that date at an earlier discussion, but we want to crystallize it and get the consensus of everyone. The second component is, what are some topics you'd be interested in going over? We've heard about, um, navigating the Municipal Code website to help search and find relevant pieces, things like going over the rules and norms. Please let us know. Send in a grab bag. We'll figure out what we can do with our time. And other than that, those are the staff updates.
Lovely. Any commissioner updates? Commissioner Cooley.
I'd be curious about an update on the junior commissioner, um, position that had been mentioned last year.
We are pending one piece of legal review before we can move forward with that. And the, uh, the community member who is interested in that has been very patient and very, uh, determined in communicating, so we hope to get resolution soon.
All right. With that, um, I look for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we are adjourned.